Good evening, and Maryland Public Schools Board President Kevin Blake, and I'd like to follow this meeting to order at some point. First, I'd like to introduce members of the MAPS Board of Education. Vice President Maria Volpe, Captain Brenner, Ron Liberty, Paul Crew, Chad Krieger. Just joining us is Treasurer Brett Waller. Unable to make it this evening is Board Member Linda England. Also participating later in tonight's meeting, you will hear from Superintendent Shannon Murray and Director of Business Services Dr. Kelly Strick. I want to remind everyone that parliamentary procedure will be followed at this meeting. Please take note. You can find the notice of publication on the green handout, ground rules and voter qualification on the blue handout, and the hours of the annual meeting on our yellow handout. I ask that anyone that speaks at the microphone clearly states their full name, whether or not they are a district resident, but at least 28 days, and if they are qualified voter, meaning age 18 on our board today. At this point, I'd like to make a brief opening statement and welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and annual meeting budget hearing. Thanking you all for your attendance. Couple of quick thoughts and we'll get started with the meeting. I'd like to take a moment and thank everyone in the district, beginning with staff and students, for doing the best they can, for staying positive and doing whatever it takes. We have been and continue to be in challenging times. Please stay mentally strong and stay positive. Believe it or not, we understand and we do care. We know it isn't easy. We know that it's not always perfect. We know that things don't always go as planned. But we all are trying our best and doing our parts to save education for the students in Maryland Public Schools. Without saying too much, Mr. Murray Southern, who's upcoming State of the District speech, I'd like to briefly mention some of the exciting changes throughout the district in the past few months. In fact, I'll only mention two of those changes. In July, we welcomed both Superintendent Shannon Murray and Director of Business Services Dr. Kelly Strick. I want to thank you on behalf of the board for all you do for the district. I ask you to keep up the good work and all you do to make MAPS the best district it can be. As I conclude my opening comments, just want to challenge everyone to please continue to believe in the process, stay focused on our positive intent. And I tell you for certain that Maryland Public Schools is doing its very best to safely educate our youth. Please continue to work together and do what's best for our students, staff, and our community. Thank you. At this point in the agenda, I'd like to request nominations for the election of Chairperson. Do we have any motions, Mr. Crew? Motion by Paul Crew, second by Ron Liberty. Are there any other nominations for the election of Chairperson? Any additional nominations for election of Chairperson? Hearing now all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion to nominate myself Kevin Blake as Chairperson is carried unanimously on a voice vote. This time, I've entertained a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda. There's a motion by Brett Waller. Do we have a second? Second by Maria Volpe. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next, I entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes and accept the minutes of the last annual meeting as they appear on our pink handouts. We have that motion at some point. So move by Maria Volpe, do we have a second? Second by Ron Liberty. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes and accept the September 2021 annual meeting and budget hearing minutes as they appear on the pink handout carries unanimously on a voice vote. At this point, on the agenda, I'd like to direct it to our Treasurer Brett Waller for the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, it was 2021, 2022 year-end and 2022, 2023 budget, um, excuse me, or as well as. Uh, there was an increase of just over $2 million in Fund 10, uh, Fund 10 balances revenue has exceeded expenditures in the 2021, it's on 22 school years. This increase in fund balance allowed for the decrease in the nominated for short-term borrowing which stays on the interest of us. There was no transfer to Fund 46 at the end of 2021, 2022 school year. The food service fund, Fund 50, saw another increase in fund balance, uh, to a total of $523,000, $543.96. This is largely due to increased participation and programming related to breakfast and lunch programs related to the pandemic. There are plans to update equipment with this fund balance in the 2022, 2023 school year. The fund balance for Fund 80 dropped to $10,399.54. We have increased our Fund 80 levy this year to adjust for increased costs. Maryland Public Schools is now debt-free. There is no levy for Fund 38, 439 in the 2022, 2023 school year. As a result of the drop in the previous operational referendum, there's a significant decrease in tax levy and overall revenue and budget for the 2022, 2023 school year. And lastly, certain funds such as Fund 27 and Fund 19 are not carrying fund balance because based on WU, FJR, and GASB coming guidelines. Appreciate anyone taking the time to attend the meeting and reviewing.
Thank you, Brett. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn the annual meeting and convene a budget hearing. There's a motion by Paul Crew, second by Ron Liberty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion to adjourn the annual meeting and convene the budget hearing carries unanimously on a voice vote. The lecturers have the right to be heard on the proposed budget. The lecturers do not approve the budget. The lecturers do vote on the local tax levy needed to implement the budget. However, in accordance with Wisconsin statute 120.12, REN 3, the school board honor before November 1st determines the amount necessary to operate and maintain the district schools, and honor before November 6th certifies the final tax levy. This time, Kelly Strick will outline the 2022, 2023 budget and resulting levy fund on the financial pages in 2022, 2023 budget book.
Good evening. Glad to be here tonight for the budget hearing. Um, first, I'd just like to share some current information related to, um, the state of the district budget. We are in the second year of a state budget. Um, school district revenue limits, there was no per pupil adjustment unless under or this school year and that's the year I am in the budget. And there was no increased salary ceiling adjustment, um, both last fiscal year and this coming fiscal year. There were some adjustments to categorical aid, um, meaning some increases to some of those aids. We are operating without a $2.5 million operating referendum in 2223, so we will see a significant drops in our budget as a result. Um, as a district, like many districts across the state, we're continuing to use ESSER funds. Um, four MAPs, but we have approximately $1.6 million in salary fringe, um, in ESSER. And we also have dedicated, um, about $1 million for technology refreshment during the crisis this spring. Um, I'll speak to this a little bit more later, but we do need to consider or be aware of that fiscal budget that comes with ESSER dollars as they transition out or expire at the end of 2021. Um, as a reminder, revenue limit is the maximum amount of revenue that can be raised by state aid and tax levies. So you can do this equation, revenue limit minus tax levy gives you state aid or state aid plus tax levy equals revenue limit. I'd like to use the visual of the scale, you'll see that because as one goes up, the other goes down in ways where it's a function of. Um, history on revenue limits, they started in the 1993, 94 school year. Was designed to restrict the amount of revenue school districts can raise through local revenue taxes and state revenue aid, and a lead based on a per pupil basis. Does not include that state categorically, um, federal aid, and local receipts. Um, it used to increase annually on a per pupil basis, but six of the last eight years, there's been a $0 increase per pupil. It's based on a school district's three-year rolling membership, um, and is also dependent on shared cost and property values. It can only be exceeded if approved through local referendum, which we are going to undo. This visual kind of shows that the history of that per pupil adjustment that I talked about, you can actually see in 2011, it, um, dropped significantly. Um, and we still haven't revolved it, and therefore, this is one of the reasons we're seeing a growing number of referendums, not just MAPs. There are many school districts the last couple of years that have gone to referendum due to this, um, lack of funding available through the revenue limit or the limits in place. Um, it's difficult to keep up with inflation in terms of the costs that we have, um, or providing increases to salary fringe, et cetera, um, with limited revenue, with appropriate increases to match the gap. So as a reminder, what's within our revenue limit is Fund 10, that's our general fund where most operational expenses is, as well as Fund 38, if we had debt, we are no longer have debt, and Fund 49, which is a capital project fund that MAPS doesn't have. Outside of the revenue limits, we have other revenue sources, including categorical aid such as library, transportation, Sage, PGR. Um, there's also a lot of many state budget grants such as ESSER dollars I talked about, student fees, and then of course, any, um, tax levy for referendum approved debt in Fund 39, and again, MAPS is debt-free, and our tax levy for community service, which for MASH, primarily funds our aquatics, our pool, as well as middle school extracurricular activities. Uh, on the screen, you'll see a revenue limit spreadsheet. We have some available, um, as handouts. And like, it's a lot of details in there, but I've notified with a few, um, key black arrows. The first one, top left, is our membership. And again, um, our membership, meaning residents, students, is a big, um, player into that revenue limit, our total revenue limit. Um, the bottom black arrow on the left-hand side is our property value. And that will impact a lot in terms of the audit we have and any back balance between the two. You'll see that our total revenue limit is $25,816,739. State aid is $18,325,962, and our tax levy for Fund 10 then becomes $7,490,777. Um, with $225,000 debt for Fund 80 levy, it's a mill rate projection of $5.14. Um, the changes on October 15th is when the spreadsheet and all the final numbers are released. Um, there was a decrease in aid from original projections, um, in the original budget publication and, um, the budget presented to the board last month. So with that decrease in aid, like the scale I mentioned earlier, there's an increase in the levy, which is a slight increase in the mill rate from that projection. You can see our mill rate history in the graph. Here's a graph, um, illustrating our mill rate history. So you'll see we're going to have a significant drop, um, showed a line there for that $5.14 mill rate. That's largely due to the drop in that operational referendum. Um, we anticipate though, however, um, we are going for another operational referendum in November. Um, it will increase again, but we likely won't hit some of those high points that we saw a lot, um, in some of the previous years, um, due to a number of factors, we can do property values and things like that. As a reminder, as we're digging into the budgets, kind of what are those funds? As I mentioned, Fund 10, that's the general fund. Um, this is general operations fund and for us, um, proposing, um, just under a $40 million budget for Fund 10. Fund 21 is special revenue trusts for us. That's primarily just even activity accounts and scholarships. Um, those do not play a role in fund balance per se, but they are, um, monitored within Fund 21 for testing roles. Fund 27 is everything related to special education. Um, that can't have a fund balance at the end of the year, but budgeted to transfer to offset any costs that, um, aren't getting, aren't, um, that we don't receive through aid or other grant sources. Fund 29 is special revenue trust for MAPS, head start is the primary, um, revenue and expense source in Fund 29. Debt funds are Fund 38 and Fund 39, as I've mentioned several times, um, MAPS is debt-free. Um, this is unusual per district, and I can tell, share that in any of my conversations with different vendors, they always comment on how it's very unusual, um, to be debt-free. And I think it's, um, something, um, to be proud of in terms of that, certainly something that we need, but that we've been able to pay back. Saves overall revenue tax levy, et cetera. Fund 46 is our long-term capital improvement trust fund. Um, this is where we can put money that can kind of stay year after year, kind of, although a non-perpetual trust is kind of serves in that fashion for capital improvements. Fund 50 is our service fund. Fund 80 is community service fund. As I mentioned earlier, it's middle school extracurricular activities and our advice. Um, so I'll talk a little bit about fund balance, which is a conversation we've been having at the last few board meetings. Um, fund balance is an economy term, which means assets minus liabilities. It's not a cash balance, um, necessarily. It's partial cash and partial money over by the district. Um, and there's a fund balance amount at the end of every fiscal year on June 30th. District auditors recommend a fund balance of 20 to 25 percent, and DKI recommends an amount sufficient that short-term borrowing for cash flow could be avoided, and would also allow the district to set aside sufficient assets to realize its longer range goals. So the dimensions of the problem adequate fund balance include no short-term borrowing, better credit rating, use of large projects, purchases that can't be budgeted, purchase goods stewardship of taxpayer dollars. Um, as you can see on the slide, I have our, our Fund 10, um, fund balances for the last 10 or so years. Um, we just went over the 20 percent mark last year, as we mentioned, um, putting a little over $2 million in fund balance. That allowed us to reduce our short-term borrowing down to 5.1 million from 6.4 million. Last year, the interest rates were relatively low on short-term borrowing. Um, going into this year, we knew interest rates would be higher, and they are significantly higher. So, um, that additional funds and fund balance will save us that cost in there. As I mentioned again, Maryland is debt-free, so there is no debt to report. I do have some slides to illustrate our revenue and our expense sources. So on revenue, the largest piece of that pie, you can see is state aid, that's that gray blue, um, part. That is, um, where most of our revenue comes from, um, followed by local tax levy, which is that red one. You can notice, um, inter-district, that's largely because we have a significant more of student open enrollment, that's why, so that's paid from inter, our other districts. That green slice, um, that's next, that's federal dollars, mainly through grant dollars, we're different federal dollars. Um, and then the other, the other, our other sources, which is. For expenses, like most districts, we're a service industry, that you can see the largest piece, that our piece is salaries, coupled by that lighter blue is fringe, so we have about 70 percent of our expenses due to more salary fringe, which is pretty typical for school districts. Um, next, you can see purchased services, generally your largest contracted services are your transportation and food service, so they're your contracted services. Um, and then the purple, non-capital items, that's going to be more of the stuff that we purchase for within tax remuneration or support to members. Um, in the packet, you will see updated goal of the budget action, which is going to be more detailed of our total budget, as well as the budget publication, which summarizes. Um, I actually just put a clip of that on here, again, of Fund 10, as that is the largest piece of our operational budget, which again is $39,485,840.34. Um, proud to share that we do have a balanced budget, um, moving into the 2023. If you want to comment on Fund 80, as that levy, um, is index of the total levy. Our fund balance did drop down to, um, just over $10,000 last year. Um, we are increasing our levy, that's largely due to increased, um, costs associated with product director and lifeguards. It makes some adjustments in the spring with, um, salary benefits due to competition and being able to help, um, staff to support them. A reminder that Fund 80 levy is a separate levy from Fund 10, but must be set at the annual meeting and approved. I do want to comment on our student enrollments and the revenue limit. As I mentioned before, and it's rather complicated, but we look at a three-year membership, and I pulled in the last four, three, four years, just so you can see that trend. So we're looking at summer FTE and September FTE of resident students, that's based on MERRILL students, so it may tend here or elsewhere. You can see in 2019, it was $2,522, then $2,425, $2,334, $2,295. It's the same decline in the middle. Um, the other graph you can see on there is membership. That means students that attend the district. So that we're looking at MERRILL students that stay here and the students that open enrollment. You'll also see that decline. Um, with that, we are protected by the whole harmless as well as declining the limit exemptions within the revenue limit that we don't feel that very suddenly in terms of from one year to the next and that drop. It helps kind of to lessen that a little bit, but over time, we are going to see less revenue. Um, and that's certainly again, with a pretty significant drop against us, here's something we need to consider. Um, and I think we always have in MAPS and will continue, we need to look at that as well in terms of what we think about budget, um, and what's needed to consider the number of students, um, and make a decision as well. Do you want to speak a little bit about grant dollars and the fiscal cliff? Um, so our current ESSER grants, ESSER 3 allocation was two, just over $2.8 million. Um, that period ends in September of 2024. We have approximately $1.6 million for salary fringe of staff for the 2223 school year in the ESSER grant. Some of those positions were added as a result of the ESSER grant availability, and some positions are being paid out of ESSER due to lack of budget in Fund 10. That was a strategy, um, done in particular with loss of operational referendum. So we, we have some time with these green dollars to sustain that, but we are going to have to make some decisions moving forward. ESSER 2, um, allocation was $2,294,154. That ends in September of 2023. One point, just over $1.1 million has already been spent. Um, the balance is dedicated to our technology refresh. As I mentioned, we grant dollars are done, which is what we need, need to be made regarding expenses, and some expenses may return as funds. This time, I would entertain a motion.
Thank you, Kelly. This time, I've entertained a motion to reconvene to the annual meeting. Motion by Maria Volpe, second. By Ron Liberty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion to reconvene to the annual meeting carries unanimously on a voice vote. Tim, if you could put the slide of Resolution A up. So you can see on the screen, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution A exactly as stated on the screen. There's a motion by Paul Crew. Do we have a second? Second by Brett Waller. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion to adopt Resolution A exactly as stated on the screen carries unanimously on a voice vote. Tim, if you could put Resolution B up. This time, I entertain a motion to adopt Resolution B. We have a motion by Shannon Murray. Do we have a second? Second by Maggie Kowser. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As I've heard, those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Four vendors standing to the Resolution B. Otherwise, the Resolution B carries on a voice vote. Next, we'll put Resolution C on the screen. I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution C as stated on the screen. There's a motion by Maria Volpe, second by Paul Crew. For Resolution C, all those in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion to adopt Resolution C exactly as stated on the screen carries unanimously on a voice vote. This time, I'll introduce Superintendent Shannon Murray to go over the state of the district committee.
Thank you, Kevin. To the board, to the meeting, everyone. I'm Shannon Murray, and I have the fortune of serving as the superintendent of schools in the Maryland Public Schools. The 2223 school year represents a time of great hope and optimism for the MERRILL School District. As the COVID-19 pandemic and all the uncertainty, the disruptions that came with it slowly disappeared in our rearview mirrors. It's a great opportunity to begin looking ahead to the benefit of our students and our community. As we begin the school year, we're fully aware that it was going to be one of both opportunities and challenges in a year that would present us with numerous chances to rise to the occasion and make our district the best it could be. This year, MAPS, uh, this should provide the MAPS with a chance to reboot and reset its course through numerous leadership changes. I, of course, took over as superintendent on July 1st after serving for 16 years as high school principal. Shortly thereafter, Dr. Kelly Strick joined us, uh, as Director of Finance after serving various leadership roles, including superintendent of schools and other districts. There are also five new building principals in our district, the new activities director, and a big chunk of our administrative team, so it's a significant leadership to share from our district. While none of those positions are new, the new faces, the new places will be fresh in our eyes and a new perspective, which will benefit our students and be a welcome change for our district. This year marks the second year of our school consolidation plan. Not only did this move give us the opportunity to be better stewards of our community's funds, provided educational and learning benefits as well. So look forward to what our staff, the solid teaching teams and learning communities in each of those buildings can do for the students of Maryland. Prince's Virtual Academy continues to be recognized as a leader in virtual learning throughout Wisconsin. And in fact, BDO was recently named the top online high school in Wisconsin by NCH, looks like the breaks, institutes of learning, including high schools, and always the grants and the students. Now, although it was formerly down a few years ago in the COVID, uh, the COVID pandemic put the, uh, the breaks, so to speak, on the high schools' refining writing initiatives, and those things were put on pause, but it happened to report that refining writing sent to the implement this year at MERRILL High School. This initiative, combined with three years college prep courses, a solid dual graduate program at MTC and the new, we've seen this fine at, at American County, and one of the best youth apprenticeship programs in Wisconsin, helped to ensure that all students at MERRILL High School will graduate, college, and more career ready. Now, there are to be sure some challenges ahead as well. Perhaps the most pressing one is the passing of the November 8th, four-year 2.599 recurring referendum. This essential referendum will help MAPS deal with the state funding shortcomings that districts everywhere are facing, will protect our opportunities for our students, will help MAPS successfully transition away from the federal ESSER funds as they expire without the strike. The elementary consolidation plan that I mentioned earlier threatens the facilities, opportunities, and challenges in our district, particularly with the Jefferson Elementary Building. MAPS has carried and maintained that goal for the last year, and we conducted district-wide facility study this year to ensure that sound decisions are being made with all of our facilities. And the whole course is that the best decision is made in Martin Jefferson School, uh, for our district. As the role continues to be on a slow, steady decline, MAPS needs to continue to develop strategies to ensure that our district is right-sized at all times, and that we're making the best use of our tax, uh, tax laws at every level. We'll continue to find efficiencies throughout the organization, and we'll proactively address these role achievements that we're facing. Finally, MAPS needs to take a purpose, will look at its future, and plan to be ready for what lies ahead, and to prepare our students for a changing world. To accomplish that goal, we'll conduct a long-range planning process this year, which will include stakeholders from throughout the district, to help us develop strategies that will help us employees for success over the next five years. Finally, it's important to have defined goals as we lead, uh, our work throughout the year. This year, there are three essential goals in our mission. First, we will regroup around student achievement and address some learning loss and struggles that pandemic blocked our students over the last several years. For example, ACT scores throughout the country are at an all-time low, and MERRILL is no exception. Our high school team is aggressively tackling this issue to ensure that our students have knowledge and skills to be successful after graduation. The same is true at every level of our student district, as teachers are studying student results and body armor instruction to meet the needs of our students. Secondly, we will increase communication engagement with our community and families to help strengthen the important school and home bond that is so crucial to student growth and learning. In addition, we'll continue to build the partnerships. In addition, we'll continue to build partnerships with the community through career and technical education advisory groups, through our established booster organizations, through our relationships with the Chamber of Commerce, and through local service organizations. Finally, we'll continue to be great stewards of the community's resources, always pointing to students, and forward for every decision when facing financial challenges and the others. I'm very excited and optimistic about the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and the year. We look forward to facing the challenges and opportunities that present themselves to us. I know it now that we have the people in place, the faculty, our community, to accomplish great things as we prepare for students, our students' learning.
Thank you, Shannon. This time, I entertain a motion to set the next annual meeting and budget hearing for September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Motion by Maria Volpe, second, Ron Liberty. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion to set the next annual meeting and budget hearing for September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, carries unanimously on a voice vote. This time, I entertain any other matters provided by law relating to the management and school district affairs. Hearing none at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn from our annual meeting and budget hearing. Motion by Maria, seconded by Chad Krieger. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. This meeting is adjourned. At this time, we're going to call to order a special board of education meeting. As we saw in our, our handout, so we can do a roll call, please, Shannon.
Director Asmus. Gafflin Brownberg. Rita Swoloff. Brett Waller.
Here.
Linda Yiddling. Paul Crowe.
Here.
Chad Krieger.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. On our agenda is the adoption of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget and levy certification. A tax topic summary sheet this evening was from Kelly Strike. There is a recommended motion. Paul?
I recommend a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget as presented, will set the market tax levy at seven million, four hundred and eighty dollars, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars per cent, two hundred and twenty-five thousand per eighty, a total levy of seven million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven.
Motion by Paul, accepted by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. This time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn from our special meeting. Motion by Chad, seconded by Ron. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance.